A unique time when we get to meet the candidates and you can interact with them in the form of your questions that you will for the second half of the program. If you want to ask a question, we do ask it. You fill out the little sheet at the door and then bring it up to either Mike Smith-Patten or Andrew or myself and the second half of our forum will be your questions. How we're going to do this tonight? We're going to start off, each candidate will get three minutes to tell who they are or whatever they want to say as opening remarks. At that point, we'll ask a series of prepared questions. Each candidate will get two minutes. We'll go sequentially. The positions up here were drawn randomly. We'll start with Mr. Hanson. The next time, we'll start with Mr. Ramtham and so forth. After the initial questions, the two-minute question, they have a chance, if they want to, to do a follow-up. They're not obligated to do so, but if they want to, you may do so. I want to thank the statesmen for putting this on. I want to thank all of you for being here and I want to especially thank our candidates. Being a public service servant is difficult. It's a dauntless task and often a thankless one and anybody who steps up to serve deserves our respect. It is my hope from this evening that what we'll get out of this will be an evening of civility and dignity and we'll get to know each of the candidates better so that you can make an informed choice on election day. That being said, we'll begin right away with opening remarks and Mr. Hanson. Thank you.
Yeah, it didn't hurt anybody's ears. That's awesome. Welcome. Great turnout. According to my quick math, we looked at about triple what showed up to West Bend for their candidate forum. So I appreciate everyone's time tonight to come out and find out what we've got going on here. My name is Troy Hanson. Been a resident of the district for 13 years. I've got three children currently in the district and one already graduated and all that happened. Been on the board now for three years and I've learned quite a bit in that timeframe. We cover a lot of ground, a lot of things that need to get covered in government and they don't tend to go very fast. That's an educational experience. Got to meet a lot of great people. We've got a lot of great staff in this district that do a really nice job and I think that's one thing that we really have to make sure we work on, is staff retention. We're in Act 10 now, that started just as I came into office. So we were kind of the guinea pigs as that came on. And the staff retention portion, they're free agents, they can go and do things they couldn't do before as far as changing districts and having additional opportunities. I think we made some very nice gains with some staff last year that I think are turning out to be a pretty good situation for our kids. And that tends to be the main issue here. I joined the board three years ago trying to help change the educational effect of what my children are going to see in Kewaskom High School. I think that occurred. Sons are doing very well at MBTC, I'm happy to say, in the same timeframe. Test scores are up. Our open enrollment situation, we gained 12 students this year and it's something that you can keep gaining on because we get $6,500 extra for every child that we can draw to this district or retain in this district. So it's been quite a neat opportunity. Enjoyed working with the administrative team over the past three years. I think we've got some really solid people and most of them, we hired. That's, we've got a very young group that is working very hard, very motivated. We had a great experience last August. We met with them out at the Cedar Prairie and went through a lot of information to help get ready for this coming school year. So I hope you brought some very good questions. We're here to help, tell us a little more, tell you a little more about us and to answer the questions to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ramtham.
Timothy Ramtham, good evening and thank you also to the statesman and to Mr. Kenworthy for helping this process for this evening and thank you all for showing up. It's good to see you all, it really is. A little bit about me, I was born and raised in Kewaskom and I've essentially been a lifelong resident of this community. I did leave town for a handful of years, several years ago, to pursue career opportunities that took me to Northern Illinois and to Texas, but ultimately I came home because home is where the heart is. While I was away however, I want you to know financially, for financial reasons I should say, is when I was out of state, I continued to own home and property here in the state and continue to pay taxes because I knew it would help fund the process for the school. So I was rather pleased for that. Wonderful experiences I had when I was a kid growing up in this community. So wonderful community, it's a great place to raise kids and it's a great place to stay. I really had a good time when I was younger. I do remember profound differences I felt from my family members where they were all dedicated to service for this community, starting with my maternal side, my grandfather, Dr. Edwards and his wife, Alma. They gave 50 years of their life to dedicate to this community and to the people of this community. I had my great-grandfather, Henry Ramtham, and his two sons, Sheldon Senior and Harvey and their, and his daughter, I should say, Lozita, my great-granddaughter, whose name was Emma. They started the business in Tom's World in the 30s and they ran that for almost 50 years as well, which included heating, fuel and a hardware store. So there's a second family, I had families on both sides. My great uncle Myron on my dad's side was married to my great aunt Lozita. She ran tractor repair business and simplicity implement shop here in town to help service the people of this community. My uncles, Dick Edwards and Alan Tesser, both served in the board as well. And I also have my current aunt Gwen Dreer, who serves this community quite extensively. She's part of the Chamber, she's part of the Movement's Club and she's part of the Wheels on Wheels Program. And I tell you that because when I thought about doing this opportunity, I was drawn to it and compelled to do it because it's in my DNA to serve. I enjoy this very much and they serve with great joy and so do I, so I'm very pleased and very proud to be a member of this board. The third item I'd like to touch on is, I'm a product of this Kewaskom School District Public Education System. I'm a 1975 graduate and I'm very proud of it. And our class was the first class that graduated using the brand-new fieldhouse or the gym. And speaking of the fieldhouse, item number four to touch on real quick is, one of the reasons I decided to run is back in the fall of 2010, there was something that happened relative to my class gift which was put up on the fieldhouse wall. It was a picture of the mascot and it was painted over. And long story short, and it's a pretty good story, but I got a couple of minutes here, that caught my attention and when I started to look into the situation of what's been going on at the school and what people felt in the community, it wasn't just that one thing that drew me. It did catch my attention, but there was other things that drew me, so I decided to run for office and try to make a difference. There were some things that I wanted to address right away the first year and we did get those addressed. The last item I'd like to just touch on about myself is, my focus is on standards and structure and accountability and due process. I'm very particular about efficiency and accountability and that's my focus with this opportunity. This is a business, there's a science of education and there's a business of education and everything runs off of the dollar for this organization to run properly. So we have to do things right in standard and structured way and I'm all about process.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Mr. Fisher.
Hello, Kewaskom supporters and thank you for coming this evening to learn more about the school board candidates. My name is Jay Fisher and I want to be sure to thank the three other candidates who are here tonight. It takes a great amount of time and energy to be on the school board and I sincerely appreciate the work they've already done for the district over the past few years. I grew up in Milwaukee and I'm a product of the Milwaukee Public School System. For those of you who know me, I'm a huge sports fan and was fortunate enough to have been granted a baseball scholarship to Rockford College where I graduated with a degree in Business and Recreation Management. I'm engaged to Kathleen Christensen and we live in the town of Wayne. I have three children and she has children, three children in the Kewaskom School District. I began my career at the Boys and Girls Club 24 years ago and continue to work there today. I've had the opportunity to work in Milwaukee, Rockford, Illinois, and most recently I've been the executive director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Washington County for the last 16 years. When I started in West Bend, we had 44 members and $20,000 in the bank. Today, we serve 2,800 kids annually. We have five locations and we have a balance sheet that shows 4.8 million dollars in assets. We began with the development of the West Bend Club by raising 2.7 million to build a club there. In Jackson, we raised a million dollars to contribute to a collaborative build project with the Village of Jackson. We recently opened up two new clubs in Hartford and all of these openings have been successful, but opening at the Kewaskom Club is some of the most meaningful for me. When I first learned about the need here, I was compelled by the strong desire of the community to provide after-school programming for kids while parents finish up their workday. We know that all of you work very hard. The club has since expanded to provide morning and after-school program along with volleyball and basketball leagues throughout Washington County to help the Kewaskom kids as well. More than 2,000 kids have been served over the last seven years by the Boys and Girls Clubs in Kewaskom. The Boys and Girls Club operates with 41 Board of Directors and Board of Trustees. I manage more than 50 staff and hundreds of volunteers. Together, we have grown an organization that is top-notch, helping thousands of kids across this county. My entire career has been focused on providing opportunities for kids through sports, after-school learning and character development. I am running for school board to give back to the Kewaskom community the leadership skills this board needs to continue to move the school district in the right direction. When I first came to Kewaskom, I went to a Friday night football game and was inspired by the intense pride this community has for our children. The same spirit needs to be reflected in the classroom. When children sense pride, they will have a desire to learn more, teachers will be inspired to educate, administrators will lead with passion and the board will provide oversight with dignity and respect, which is needed. I firmly believe that the board, administrators and teachers can come together under one united front to provide the highest degree of quality education for our kids. When that happens on graduation day, just like football Fridays, the community can cheer our kids on, take pride in knowing we have done everything we can to provide the best education for our kids and that, my friends, will be the ultimate victory for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your time. My name is Sue Miller and I'm currently on the board and it's been a wonderful experience and lots of education over the time period. I am married with two children. We reside in the Farmington area. We've lived out there for nine years and I have a daughter that's in fifth grade at Farmington and my son is in the Kewaskom Middle School. I can't believe he's going to be a freshman next year, so. Big thing I want to focus on is what really makes a school district great and I believe there's a lot of dynamics that go into that and it's, I think it first starts with a strong positive attitude. It's like anything you do, you have to have the right attitude going into it and a passion. We definitely need strong, effective teachers, support staff, custodians to make that happen, to focus on the rigor in the district. Strong academic performance, which we're seeing an uptick on our test scores and we want to see that trend continue. Parental involvement, that needs to be solid throughout and as well as a community involvement in building those partnerships and relationships is going to be critical too. And I think it needs to go both ways, not only from the district but the community back and forth. Some other things, I really believe in maximizing the student potential and to focus on that, I believe that a community helps lead and pave the way in order to make that happen. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Start with Mr. Ramtham and then travel down to Mr. Fisher, Mrs. Miller and then Mr. Hanson. You've given us a pretty good idea of who you are and some of you have told us a little bit of history about your involvement in the school district. At this point, we're going to move more into why in 2014, why in particular right now are you running again if you're an incumbent or why are you running for the first time if you're Mr. Fisher? Why are you running right now for school board in 2014? Mr. Ramtham.
Unfinished business. We have weathered through, in my humble opinion, unprecedented times within the districts in the state specifically, this one. With the activation of Acts 10 and 32, we had significant change at the leadership position with the former superintendent leaving out, an interment coming in place and then a third one within essentially a two-year period with newness to the role. So there was a need to launch that properly, get things started. We have areas of improvement regarding how we address evaluation of our personnel. We have compensation banners to address this next year to get a comprehensive program in place for how we take care of all of our staff. We have a comprehensive insurance program that we have to implement that's going to take care of all of our staff as well and the challenges with Obamacare here are going to give us some work there as well. And the other item that I'm very passionate about is, everything that this district does costs money, everything. And we've been taking it in the shorts, if you would, the last couple of years for Madison with major reductions in revenues for our district, 1.2 million basically over the last two years. And when you're trying to run an operation, a business, where you're reducing your revenues on the front end, you have a difficult time trying to make ends meet in the back end. Eventually you get to a place where you may have to, as I call it, arteries and veins, where you may have to look at staff or programs. And when you start moving in that direction, you have issues with quality and it comes right back around to why people bring their kids to the school in the first place. They want to have a quality education. So those are the big issues that I see here for the next year. And we're in the middle of the stream and I'd like to continue that process and that's why I'm running for election. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramtham. Second question for Mr. Fisher. Why in 2014 are you running for school board?
I think my whole life I have tried to help kids in my professional life and I'm used to working with the Board of Directors for 24 years. Obviously, this is a little bit different. A nonprofit board is not elected officials, but I've worked with thousands of board members and been part of that for a long time. I understand budgets, I understand how to make a dollar go a long way. Obviously, working with nonprofits, you have to make sure the dollar goes a long way, but we definitely want to, we definitely want to make things good for kids and so it can't always be about the money. I think that just watching from afar, and certainly I'm new to the, not new to Washington County, but certainly watching from afar, I think we need to add a little bit more respect. I think as a board, we need to respect each other. There are plenty of people and with different opinions and that's okay. That's the way the world should run. That's America, so we should listen to different opinions, but at the end of the day, we need to as a board show respect, so our teachers show respect, our administrators have respect and we need to do that as a board because if we expect it out of our kids, that's what we need to do as adults, so.
Mrs. Miller.
My number one reason is making sure that the students continue learning and they're our future products, so that's incredibly important as we grow older. And I also want, you know, children to have critical thinking skills, great leadership skills, public speaking skills. We're dealing with some hot topics, you know, such as with core curriculum, the test scores. We're currently working on health insurance benefits, the compensation, that's a new thing. Act 10, of course, is making a lot of changes, so I feel it's important. I'd love to be involved in that with the three years that I've been on the board. And then just some things, you know, just how the school board should function. It's really the vision for the community schools. The superintendent administrators manage the schools, the teachers teach and the students learn. So I really want that focus to stay there and then also for the board to work with trust and respect and be an example for others. I think that's very, very important, to showing a school board doing a good job. They say, you know, that for a school board, why choose a school board candidate? It's the ability to work with team and support group decisions, a desire to work toward a stronger relationship between the district and the public it serves, a keen eye towards serving the needs of all students regardless of their abilities and backgrounds, a professional, poised demeanor and respectful behavior, respect for diverse points of view, commitment to time and energy for the meetings and workshops, knowledge about district policies, guidelines, needs, challenges and strengths. So that's really the focus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ramtham.
I'm running again after the first three years because I feel like we are at a very critical juncture in the future of Kewaskom School District. I think we have a lot of great people in place here, but again, I'm concerned about retention. How do we, how do we make sure that we're able to keep good people here, draw even, draw great people here as well to add because we are always going to have retirements, we are going to have people who move on to different opportunities. And it's all about maintaining a quality educational staff to help educate our kids. I see it as, education's a three-legged stool. We have the educators who need to do their job, we have the students who need to be motivated and we have parents who need to support their children. And I think that's a big piece. We don't turn our kids over for seven and a half hours a day and expect an end result. So it's the future of Kewaskom School District that brought me back to try for three more years, to try to continue to make the big differences we made in the past three. It's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of hours, it's been a lot of change. We've had three district administrators in the last three years. So the positive things are happening in Kewaskom. They are, and I think if that's going to continue, we have to continue to do the things to make sure that we run this like a business. When I said that three years ago, people were concerned. Well, we do need to run it like a business, we need to create an educational value. How do we do that? Well, our kids, we need to turn them into well-educated, well-rounded, future earners and taxpayers. That's our product and we need all the pieces to the puzzle to do that. A great administrative team, great teachers, motivated kids and supportive parents. And what we can do as a school board to help that cause is to add the kind of plans that we put into place here. We've changed programs, we put ELT at the end of the day to get kids extra help. We've also imparted the STAR testing program to help kids wear their week. So I think we need to continue that process so that we can create the educational value here in Kewaskom.
Okay. Now we'll have a one-minute follow-up if you choose to do so. Mr. Ramtham, you have the first opportunity if you choose. Mr. Fisher, one minute. Mrs. Miller? No? Okay. Mr. Hanson, one minute follow-up if you choose. Okay. Some of you have alluded to this before and this question will start with Mr. Fisher. One of the elephants in our educational room is the subject of Common Core State Standards and they were formally adopted in 2010. Today, four years later, it's become one of the most controversial hot-button topics we have. Knowing that any stated opinion that you may personally have will be politically charged, how would you personally deal with the topic of Common Core Standards and Kewaskom School Board's role in their implementation or do you have an alternative plan?
Well, I think there are good aspects to Common Core. The objective to make more students college-ready is important and preparing students for college or the workforce is a major goal for any school district. So we as a district must give as many opportunities to our students as possible, which Common Core is trying to achieve. Although Common Core Standards is a good thing, it's just another program by the state and federal government to raise standards. We must understand that government is always trying to change education and this is the latest attempt. I will always be in favor of local control of school districts. We may have many great things going on in Kewaskom and do not have to throw out quality existing curriculum because the government thinks we should. We should be willing to incorporate these new standards into our already excellent curriculum here in Kewaskom. As a board member, I'll always be interested in standards and student achievement. However, we must expect our superintendent, principals and teachers to implement the curriculum. They are the experts, we are not. My role as a board member will be to review data to ensure that these people are raising student achievement to its highest level. We owe it to the kids of Kewaskom.
Okay, same question for Mrs. Miller.
When I think of the Common Core, the first thing I think of, you know, when I go back to my experience back in high school collegiately and what really made the difference. And I'm sure many of you in the audience can think of names and people, teachers, coaches, support staff, custodians that really made the difference for you. And I think that's what it's really about. It's about outstanding teachers and that start paving the way regardless of the education itself. I am grateful to this day, I'm indebted for the support that I've received over the years. So I look at this kind of, I shouldn't say kind of, but very open-mindedly. You know, the core curriculum is certainly about rigor and having college and career readiness and, you know, everything that I've researched and looked into so far, it's, you know, really making the expectations higher, which I think is a great thing in trying to maximize student potential. And, you know, just some research also on that, you know, they're saying that, you know, will test scores go down? Most likely yes, because there is going to be an enhancement in rigor in the classroom. But that's not necessarily a bad thing as we go up to par. I think the big thing too, no matter which way we go on this and give perspective as a board, is that we need to make sure that we're preparing the teachers and the students in the education and their development is huge in that. One thing I could say about this, you know, when I got in the school board, for me, it never was about politics. In fact, the school board is supposed to be a nonpartisan, so I'd prefer to stay as a statesman in this and not a politician. I think also that this, you know, no matter which way we go, we still need to focus on the critical thinking and for students to understand concepts and the why and justification behind all of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanson?
I kind of thought this question might come up. Yeah, it is hot button. It definitely is and because the only way you can find out whether it's an issue or not is to do homework. You have to go and find multiple sources, just like when you did research paper, you can't have a single item on your bibliography and think you know the data. I've done my homework on it and I looked into how does this affect Kewaskom because quite frankly, I don't really care about anywhere else except for where my kids are learning, experiencing education right now. In our meeting, we were talking about policy to address Common Core and the statement was that someone wanted to make it that we may implement Common Core. And I said, well, it's a issue, Washington. I said, how about we'll at a minimum implement Common Core, meaning it's the bottom. I deal with tax law, I've dealt with tax law for 21 years. I don't like the tax laws in many cases, but they are what they are. So until legislators change them, we have to figure out how to work with them. The increase in the rigor, I think, is an important thing. College and career ready is the key phrase. These kids have to be prepared. I was fortunate enough, I went to MPS as well, not only to be a phenomenal school district, I had an English teacher my senior year at college prep, Mr. Hagan, who prepped me well enough that I didn't have to take any English at UWM. Business writing was the only course he had to take because I was prepared. And I'm not addicted to an English student, but it's all about preparation. And if we continue to raise the standards, whether it's called Common Core or whether it's called DRC's Curriculum of the Year, it's all about prepping our kids. So as long as we're constantly raising the standard, I think that's what truly matters. So legislators are going to do what they're going to do and we may not like the implementation of Common Core any more than we like the implementation of Obamacare, but that's the rules as they are, but it doesn't say you can't go above and beyond them. And I think I kind of got where I'm at in life because I went above and beyond and I expect our kids have to do the same if they want to succeed. Average isn't going to get it done. So as long as we're increasing rigor, we're winning the game.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Standards are needed in education, there's no question about it. And the state moved to adopt standards in 1990s, the mid-1990s. The Common Core State Standard element came in in 2010 and it was supposed to enhance that and make it better. And I understand the need for structured lesson plans because you have to have that in order to execute the educational process. The concerns I have about the Common Core standard process is mechanical-based. It's the federalization of the process, you've got the feds involved in this and that's a concern because usually federal programs justify concern. The data mining aspects, private information coming from the schools to a place where it can stay with that student for the rest of their life and people can access that at some point in time is a concern. Teaching to the test is also a concern. That talks at comprehension issues and I think if we're going to just teach to the test, it does make it wonderful. We actually are preparing children right for society. That said... That said, we tried to talk about this last October as a board. We wanted to have a discussion, pro and con type approach. And, and it didn't work out well. We had initial efforts, looked favorable, and then the pro side didn't materialize and the con side did, but not in the way that it needed to. And what I'd like to really have us do is have that discussion still because everybody's got opinions on it. And one side is, looks down at the other, and then both sides look at each other, and in the middle, nothing's getting done. So I'd really like to have more exposure on this, understand what it actually means, and, and take some of that data that's out there and have discussion and apply it to how we can make our district more functional with the educational process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fisher, one minute follow-up? Ms. Miller? Mr. Hanson?
Yes. To mention teaching to the test, which is a, an important piece in this discussion. Teaching the test, we may have been familiar with the ACT going way back to when we were in school. If we're not going to teach to the test, then what are we teaching? That, that's my only concern, because there's other side of the coin as well. If Johnny's a great tree climber, let's do everything to make sure he's the best tree climber in the world, even though he can't read. So there's a balance between those two. And it sounds great to talk down, teach to the test, but there's also the balance in that of, we have to have some sort of standards, some sort of level that a person can be functional. So I think when we, when we talk about teaching to the test, we need to address that issue that some kids comprehend differently, and we can definitely steer some things to them to help them in the areas that they are strong and develop them as a student, and they're already their strengths. But we also do have to do some probing in their weaknesses, just so they can be a balanced individual.
Okay. Mr. Anthem, a follow-up?
Good point. I don't disagree with that. Again, I mentioned it because I was concerned about the comprehension level. To just teach to the test and have the child pass the test doesn't mean they're comprehending all of the knowledge they need to, or to apply to subject matter. So again, it takes me back to the discussion. Let's, let's see how that plays out and talk at that, and get some data that shows that the concern isn't real. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We've alluded a few times to some discussions that didn't go the way we were hoping that they would go. And anytime a group of passionate individuals get together, there's bound to be tension. And because they're running for office, you're passionate people by default. You care about what you're doing. So knowing that tension and passion are a given, and realizing that your actions are scrutinized not only by a discerning public, but by the students who model your behavior, what is your own personal strategy for conflict resolution in matter of the board?
This has been an ongoing thing since I've actually gotten on the board, and it's, it deeply concerns me because as a school board, we, we are the leadership and that follows suit to, to the administration, the teachers, the custodians, to the students, to the community. And we should conduct ourselves in the most ethical standards. So I believe, you know, of course, when we're in meetings and we're giving perspectives and there's, we just need to be able to walk out of the room realizing that, you know, these are passionate issues, but when we step away, that we're still professionals about it, and that we don't personally attack. And if we're going to put things in the newspaper or social media, that we focus on fact and stay away from personally attacking, no different than what we're learning in elementary school on, on how to treat people. I think another thing we need to really work on is trust and respect and making sure that there's no walking quarrels or sidebar conversations going on, and again, holding ourselves to the ethical standards that, that we should.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Conflict resolution, agreeing to disagree. Yeah, that has to happen as adults. It also has to, it can only happen when there's a level of trust. And when that trust has been violated, it's really difficult to be able to get to that point. And unfortunately, that is where this has gotten to in Kiwaskam. We had a superintendent who did much of what he wanted, and the board let much of it happen. And now, because shame on, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me, now it's gone the other way. And it's become a micromanagement situation, which I think is stifling in our district. I made those comments to board members directly, privately, to try to resolve the conflict. And that's how I will continue to do it in, in the future. At some point, when things are being done that are unethical, unprofessional, and/or illegal, something more needs to be said, some more attention sometimes needs to be brought to the issue. So it, it does come to a head. And it doesn't benefit the district when there's things in the paper on a regular basis, whether it be the Kiwaskam Statesman or the West Bend Daily News. It doesn't help us with our staff retention, with our child retention, with open enrollment numbers. So we need to find trust to help with conflict resolution. We need to establish some parameters on how we're going to go about the big issues in West Bend, or so to put it, in Kiwaskam. And we don't want to fall into a situation where we're looked down upon by West Bend or any other surrounding communities. So because of those issues being out there, they must be resolved. They must be resolved with trust, and they must be resolved in public.
Okay. Mr. Anthem?
I consider myself a passionate individual as well as a unpassionate individual. And I try to remain civil and professional in every and all meeting I attend. Because I know it's an image thing, I know it's a, something that people are watching. And it's important, whether you're an officer or not of the board, to be professional at every meeting and every opportunity is essentially a requirement. We have dealt with many challenging issues the past three years essentially. We had difference of opinion the first year I was on the board because we were coming into an evolution of change, and there was reluctance and resistance to change. And yet, we continued to press on, and eventually things did evolve, and we got issues addressed. There were still levels of concern amongst the board members, still levels of disagreement, but we still got the business done. We do have an issue with being able to discuss something as human beings fully and respectfully until every single member has had a chance to get to a place where they are comfortable. I view it as an obligation out of myself as, as much as they see as an obligation on themselves. They're, they're elected by the people to represent the people. And if they're going to go into a meeting and just agree on something to avoid a conflict or just to be a rubber stamp for a recommendation that the administration wants to bring forth, I don't think that makes for an effective board. Conversely speaking, it doesn't make for an effective board if there's conflict and fighting. There's got to be middle ground, and I believe one of the best things we can do is, as a board only, have a discussion and talk about this, and then we can bring it out to the public. But there are some underlying concerns, I think, that all of us have that are impediments to that success. And so let's get that conversation done and, and just with the board members alone for starters. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Fisher?
Obviously, I'm new to this, but I have worked with, with many boards over the years. And I really firmly believe that a board needs to fly at 50,000 square feet. And I'm not positive that this board has over the years. I think we have some pretty dynamic administrators, we've got some pretty good teachers. They're the professionals, they're the people that know this. I don't live this day-to-day. I have my own profession that is a day-to-day, so do these other people. So we have to let them do their jobs and respect them, and they've been in this a long time, and they're, like I said, they're the professionals. My board leaves me alone. They don't get in day-to-day activities with the Boys and Girls Clubs. They're certainly there flying at 50,000 square feet if we need to do a capital campaign, if we need to do expansion, if we need to do things for the long run to, to help children. And I think maybe that's where this board could trust a little bit more the people that have been hired to, to do their jobs. Certainly, there's different opinions. There'll always be different opinions. But at very least, we have to respect each other's opinions, listen to people's opinions. And then that goes down to the administrators, teachers, and more importantly than any of us, goes down to the kids. And if we're not showing respect on the, on our level, then, you know, why would the kids? And we tell them that every day, the thousands and thousands of kids that I've worked with through my own, my own work. So we must show respect, show respect to the administrators, show respect to teachers, and, and trust each other. I, I don't think there's anything more important than teaching kids. I mean, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I know sometimes in the United States, we've got it turned around, doctors are making all these, this money. Hey, doctors are important, I get it. But man, people that teach kids and work with kids each and every day, that's, that's a big, that's a big deal. So all these articles in the newspaper, I, I think have to stop. Obviously, like I said, I'm new, but professionalism to this is, is very important. We have a standard that we need to set for our kids. And also, you know, in the future, this isn't the last election, don't hesitate. If you have an opinion, if you have time to be here tonight, if you think that you could make a difference in kids' lives in school districts, run for the board. There's plenty of room on the bandwagon. So don't think this is the last election, and think about that. Think about giving some time back, whether it's the school board or nonprofit. Help kids, they need you.
Okay. Mrs. Miller, a follow-up?
I just want to add that this even gets into deeper issues when there's no trust and respect, or there's a divide, and we're not working collectively, and it starts to affect others in morale. And I imagine being given a, a project and only to find out after the fact that someone else is working on the same project, and then you may feel undermined, you may feel somewhat manipulated, you may feel trumped, and you start to wonder, well, if you're going to do it, then, then what am I doing? And it gets into micromanagement. So I just think we, you know, I'm hearing great things in, in the district, it's been one of the best starts of the school year. I'm hearing wonderful things about the staff, and we need to let them do their jobs, and we need to support that. And our job as a school board is to be visionaries and focus on those things and give the staff the tools to do their, their job as well. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hanson, follow-up? Mr. Anthem, a follow-up? Mr. Fisher?
Okay. Thank you. How the board deals with the community. Community involvement in the school board is not a new topic, it's a topic that's, that recurs year after year. And one form of involvement is direct public comment at school board meetings. The state statutes are very explicit, this is not by any means a requirement of law. Instead, it includes language that states such a discourse is permissible based upon the discretion of the board. This has become a topic recently that's been played out, and so I'm interested in taking a step back and looking at the bigger picture to figure out the philosophy behind your own viewpoint of community involvement. Do you feel that community involvement is important? And if so, what form should that involvement take? And we'll begin that question with Mr. Anthem?
This is definitely a topic near and dear to my heart. I have, going back to the very beginning, I propose that we have two public comment sections in our meetings, one in the beginning and one, one near the end, some farther later in the, in the meeting sequence in the agenda. I've sent emails, made verbal requests for public comments to be on each and every agenda that we have where the board is meeting. And I recently sent an email to our president defining that even further. I said, well, let's forget the terminology workshop or meeting or whatever it is. If we're going to be making a decision, meaning a vote, or an approval, or a disapproval, each community member should have a chance to say their piece. As taxpayers, we are all minority shareholders, and the corporation is the Kiwaskam School District. And therefore, we should have an opportunity to speak. Communication is big everywhere. And this is the same. If you have, if you have an opportunity to speak at every, at every meeting, you can never say you didn't have a say in a matter. And that matters to each and every one of us, that should matter to us. There are some big issues that we've covered, they're not going to get any smaller going forward. And so if you have something to say, you should have that opportunity without a doubt. And not just at a board meeting, if you want to call a board member and have a discussion, if you want to call a teacher administrator, communicate what you're feeling, if you're concerned about something, if you have something that's bothering you, or if you have something great that's going on that you'd like to share. These are all available to express, hopefully going forward at any meeting, right in the comment section in each and every meeting.
Mr. Anthem?
This discussion item will be on the March 10th agenda for the board to discuss because there are some things that need to be said, some of them can be stated here this evening and additional ones can be said on the 10th. To begin with, Mr. Hanson is correct, we, we did want to see comments at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting back our first year on the board. And Mr. Ewald at the time strongly recommended not doing that, and ultimately it didn't happen. We were not happy about that at the time because we felt it was important to have community involvement and concerns before and after. And the reason it drove me passionately was because when I used to attend the meetings before I was even a candidate, and then when I was a candidate, it would frustrate me that you had a 16, 17-point agenda and you were done in 16 or 17 minutes. How can anything get done so fast when, when there was no discussion? So I'm in the back wanting to ask questions. So I thought having an opportunity to have interaction was a great idea. So I'm, I am definitely for it. Now, the current situation, we have a policy that talks ad policy 187, regular meetings once per month is the time when you have opportunities to talk in the public. Non-regular meetings are, are a time where if you structure your meeting process properly, you don't have that occur. However, at the last meeting on the 24th of February, there was an opportunity to open up the floor to discussion for the people present for the actionable items we had. And historically for me, when, when we moved away from the standing committees and went to the liaison, and that didn't work, and we had the Vision Committee out there, but that only meets for a month, I think some of that activity with the committee process perpetuated this problem. How do we get back to where we have opportunities around, across the board if you would and around the clock? You stay consistent with policy 187, you have your regular meeting, the meeting when people can get up and talk and, and express their concerns. At the second meeting and/or any other meeting, you have opportunities when they can't talk if they want to because they can be brought into agenda-specific discussion. So it does allow opportunity for both sessions to have interaction and discussion. I think that we can, we can talk about how we got to this place when we discussed the history, and we can come up with an action plan on the 10th. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Obviously, being new to this, I don't know all of the policies, and I would look for Jim, I mean, he's the professional to let us know about that, but I'd be willing to learn a little bit more about the policies, obviously. But of course, I think community involvement is important. You elected us to be here, so I would love to hear each and every one of your comments. I hear thousands of parents over the years that talk about comments to me at work each and every day. And I understand there's passion. Each child is the gold of their parents. And when you are the gold of your parents, it is going to be passionate, and I get it. But yes, I think we should let people speak. Let them hear, let us hear what you had to, had to say. I don't, I certainly don't have all the answers and haven't had over the years, but I know people care about their kids, and that's why we need to hear different opinions because there's a lot of people that know a whole lot more than, than I know about things, and I'd like to hear their opinions. I think communication is crucial, no matter, no matter if it's the school district or business or whatever the case, you must communicate with each other, and I think sometimes that has been lacking here. I know I certainly have nothing to hide, and I would hope that no one else on this board has anything to hide, so open communication is, is critical.
Okay. Mrs. Miller?
Absolutely, as far as community involvement, and that can go into many, many facets when I think of communication, whether that's face-to-face, whether that's email, text messaging, social media and, and things. So it gets into, to many, many areas. And I, I'm a big believer in letting passion be your guidance. And whether your passion is helping somebody in the classroom, or if it's chairing an event, being on a school board, I think that passion will shine, and that's truly what you desire to do. And... And I'm a huge believer in allowing the taxpayer, the community citizens to speak, and it allows all of us to hear different perspectives and then make the best overall decisions for the district. And I also believe it's critically important for us to be giving back, and it doesn't have to be necessarily just us. We should have students involved in the community, partnerships with corporations and businesses. So it really allows for enrichment in a community, and it builds a win-win in all different directions. And you can see this in certain markets, too, where community and corporations, school districts, they wrap themselves around each other, and it's such a positive experience. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanson, follow up? Mr. Rantham, follow up?
Trying to honor the timekeeper there, I did stop. Just prior to one other comment, I don't know how many of you would make it to the March 10th meeting, so I'll make this statement as well. Historically, for the calendar year 2013, there were two nonregular board meetings that had comments allowed, or that comments occurred, let me rephrase that, the December 12th session and on May 28th. I got a request out to the district office on what the standard and/or routine process was for consistency for 2009 through 2011. I haven't gotten information yet, but part of the logic I had in this discussion and thought process was to structure and standardize this routine. We have at least once a month, which we always had, because we only had one meeting per month. Now we have two meetings per month on average, and it does change the dynamics. And how do you adjust to that? That's what the discussion will be about on the 10th. So, I want to get that done as well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, follow up? Mrs. Knower, follow up? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rantham. As a member of the Kiwaskum Board of Education, you have many publics, and we've talked about a lot of them tonight. They all vie for your attention. You have taxpayers, community, business, the administration, teachers, staff, parents, and students. Because the school board is intrinsically a part-time venture, prioritizing those interactions is very important. If elected or reelected, how will you balance those interactions with regard to those very different groups of individuals? How will you prioritize, in other words?
Could you clarify the groups again, please, John?
Taxpayers, community, business leaders, the administration, teachers, staff, parents, and students. And none of those are necessarily all inclusive. A parent can be a community member, a teacher can be a community member as well.
Well, it touches on the whole point of what you're elected for. You're a representative, and all of those people you mentioned fall into the citizen group, the constituent group, the taxpayer group, the parent group. And so, if they have something they want to bring to you as a board member, in my case, to me, I'll minimally listen to it. We have a process where we try to funnel the concerns or questions or comments from the respective groups to the right parties to get the answers addressed through those chain of command efforts. However, it's difficult for me personally to tell somebody, "I can't talk to you." And basically, that's what the push is from the administration. Fall a policy gate 72 and go to the chain of command and step away from it. It's difficult for me to do that. I try to listen at first and then suggest and guide him that way, but I can't just put the hand of it out or not. So prioritization, I don't separate by group or person who I listen to and who I don't. I listen to everybody equally and the same. So again, I'd like to see myself as a catalyst between the concern of the individual and administration, get that information to administration, and then let the chain of command kick in, so that the process can be addressed through the right people. But again, it's difficult for me just to say, "No, don't talk to me because I'm not supposed to talk to you," so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fisher?
It's a difficult question. It's a little hard to understand all of the way it was asked, but I think you try to give time to everybody, no different than what I try to do each and every day. No matter who they are, we represent all of you. And, you know, I'm willing to listen and hear what you have to say, but I think a lot of that question comes back to open communication and trust. And so, to keep the answer short, I think if there was more open communication and trust in this school district with everybody, I don't think that's the type of question that would even need to be asked.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Knower?
When I think about this further, I immediately go to protocol and fundamental management. And what I mean by that is if things aren't followed through proper protocol, many times it can create chaos. And, for example, if we receive an email from a concerned parent, and the parent went with their concerns directly straight to the board, without, you know, going to the teacher, and then the teacher to the principal, and principal to the superintendent, and then superintendent to the school board, what happens, and I've seen it happen many times, is all of a sudden, there's three, four, five school board members responding to that parent's concerns, and we're all giving different answers, and it starts creating more madness and chaos than what it should. So I think the important thing is for we to go back and say, you know, "Did you talk to the proper channels?" And if those things aren't being done, then you go to the next in the hierarchy. And again, it helps us with time management, it helps us in consistency, and we don't always know both sides of every story, so we need to take all that stuff into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rantham?
I guess, just based on the way of the question, I will address prioritization first. My phone rings so little, and my email box sees so little activity with concerns, that there is no need to prioritize them, one at a time, because that's all that ever comes in. So I think that's really prioritization. As far as the rest of the hierarchy issue, which was assumed in the question, I think is, that's really where the question is going anyway. As we talked about before, we have people at every level of this building and district that are smarter than I. So the person to direct any question to is the next person up the line. Your children, teacher first. Teacher can't solve the issue, then it goes to principal. Principal can't solve the issue, goes superintendent. Superintendent can't solve the issue, then it comes to the board. And it's not a matter of not listening. We can definitely listen, because I need to listen if you call and have a concern or an issue you need to address, because I need to know where to direct it, because most likely, I'm not going to have your answer. I may have some ideas, but there's usually a lot of information that goes into solving a problem for any of us, any problem. So because of that fact, that is why the chain of command is so important, is because you get the right person to give you the right answer. It's no different than any business that you would work in. You don't go to the boss to find out where the extra erasers are. You might not know them. So in this case, we need to listen to people, hear them out, so that we can make an assessment of what can or can't be done in the situation, and where to direct it, or quarterback.
Follow up, Mr. Hanson?
Without being specific, a couple of items come to mind. That may have caused this question for me. One in particular was a middle school parent who was very concerned about the lack of results with the data concern. And the way it came to me was, "We've been talking about this and working on it, and nothing's happening, and things are getting worse, and I'm actually worried about the psychological impact on my child." I had to listen to that. I have to listen to that. If it was any of your children I listened to as well, I had to listen to it. And there was a request for a meeting, and the meeting was held, and the expectation of me being there was set, and that, to me, is an obligation as a servant to the constituent. Didn't want to go, tried to get out of it, but I went. The other one is relative to possibly what Sue touched on with the letter. Got a call, and then a letter, and unbeknownst to me, the call and/or letter also went to administration. Wish I'd have known that, but I just listened to it and took it to administration to have the manhandle. But that's right.
Mr. Fisher, follow up?
Certainly, you know, I will listen, but we need to let people do their jobs. And, you know, I'm not going to tell Tom Fisher how to be a principal today, just like he better not call me tomorrow and tell me how to run the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, they're professional people, they've been educators, they've done what they needed to do, and certainly, this is their profession. They have a whole lot more, a whole lot more experience than I do, and so I think, just going back to respect, and I think maybe being a newcomer to all this, I don't totally understand the question.
Mrs. Knower? Follow up? Okay. The next question. One of the many roles the school board takes is as an anchor. In fact, we're one of the largest in this area. As such, what is your philosophy towards maintaining morale, retaining staff, and providing a healthy workplace environment conducive for education?
As I said before, I mean, what's more important than teaching our kids for the future? They are our future. And I think, obviously, I've been working with kids for a lot of years, and I've seen a lot of kids turn around lives, lives turn around. That's the reason I go to work every day, is because I get to make a difference in kids' lives. I think teachers, whether it's teachers, administrators, support staff, the whole system, extracurricular, coaches, whatever the case, was mentioned before, that they're the most important people in our lives. They're the people that we remember. I can remember all of my coaches. I don't care if it was in grade school, or high school, or in college. I can remember teachers that made a difference in my lives, and so morale is everything. And to have paid teachers what they're worth, I think is very important. I understand, like I said before, how to make dollars go a long way, but it's very difficult. One of the reasons I think I ran for school board is, I thought I heard a statistic of 29 superintendents here in 34 years, or something like that. It was, I don't know if that's exactly correct, but when you're running, I don't care what it is, when you're running that many superintendents in and out, and principals, and staff, and different people, you need some continuity, and you need good people to be part of that. And so, this in and out stuff has to stop. You won't be successful as the years go on if you don't have some continuity and good people here.
Okay, Mrs. Knower?
Imagine working your job every day, knowing that there's low morale, it becomes an unhealthy environment, and it starts to trickle in everything you do. It bleeds into everything that you do, and it starts to affect, you know, your fellow coworkers, it affects the leadership team, it can affect the students. And we have to, we must maintain, you know, high morale, and we need to trust and respect those in their positions, and that's absolutely critical. Another thing that feels big with morale is making sure that we're recognizing. Everybody likes to feel important, and we're taking that time and effort to congratulate people and paying attention to the small details. And it's no different, I talk about, you know, having a positive attitude. That's everything, folks. Everything starts with a positive attitude in everything you do in your life. So we have to have that within the district, and that's going to shine throughout, and it's going to shine to other districts, and it's going to give us a lot of pride and credibility, and others will see that.
Mr. Rantham?
And this comes back to one of the main points I made in my remarks about staff retention. How do we do that? Value, appreciation are all important pieces. We're working very hard right now to work with our new insurance broker to make sure we have the best benefits for the dollars that we could put together. We're working on putting a salary schedule together to make sure that we are allocating our wage dollars in the best way we know how, and because we don't think we can do it the best, we're looking at using an outside consultant for that. It's all about doing it the best, the best benefits, the best wage packages. And the really sharp guy over there with the blue shirt on, who's been working here for 20 months now, Packer Correlation, he's our Ted Thompson, he's our GM. The salary cap that Ted deals with, that's our school budget. Our wage and comp budget is $11 to $12 million. If, in my position, at 50,000 feet, I'm going, "Okay, Jim, let's see how we, how do you get the best staff for this number? How do we get the best people for our kids for this number? Because that's all we got. There's no gold hiding in the shell out back that I'm aware of." Should we throw some, she could tell me for sure, I don't think there is. Anyway. So value appreciation, benefits, fair market value wages, I've said that phrase many, many times, because we are competing with is who? Slinger, Westbend, Random Lake, appears. So just like in the competitive business marketplace, we have to compete on wages and benefits, but also on value and appreciation. And I think that's part that needs to be expressed as well. It's one of those intangibles, but it's not all about the dollars. The dollars are what everyone complains about, and the tax bill isn't what they want. But we also have to do a great job of educating the kids and create, the phrase I said earlier, educational value. That's a big piece.
Thank you. Mr. Rantham?
Creating a positive working environment is conducive to not only attracting but retaining people, and everyone has different perspectives on what the definition of that type of environment is. It's not just about money. Money doesn't hurt, but money isn't everything. It is the respect, it is the appreciation, and not just from any one entity like the board, for example. In fact, the board has less to do with staffing-related matters than any one of the groups. It's primarily administration's role and responsibility to recommend to the board who they want to bring in, or who they want to not keep, kind of thing. So we have less to do with it on the front end. However, we can influence success in the areas of taking care of the people well by getting the compensation program, which should include an evaluation process so that you don't have people within a group arguing and fighting amongst themselves, because you can have somebody working really hard, really well, and really smart, and just knocking the cover off the ball, and you have another person probably in a similar environment, and they're just doing enough to get by. That doesn't all between those two people as well. So the comprehensiveness of the compensation program has to address the performance factor. Protecting them all with proper and affordable insurance is another big deal. And I did like the recognition comment, I think that's huge as well. The feedback, letting people know on a regular basis how well they're doing, does go a long way. And lastly, I would suggest perhaps getting some feedback from the staffs, all of us, administration, teachers, and support, and asking them what they like about their job and what they don't like about their job, perhaps. And if we can get some information about areas that we need to work on to improve, that would be helpful for the many, so thank you.
Mr. Fisher, follow up?
Yes, again, I think building morale is obviously critical. Fair market wages is needed, I understand that, and we must compete, I get it. Student achievement, though, is why we're all here, and that's critical. And I think, just looking from afar at some of the board meetings, we need to bring kids and school personnel, we need to celebrate successes of Kiwaskum. I think the school district has been good at throwing out maybe some of the negatives, but we need to bring kids, and whether you won a baseball championship, or whether you four-point student or whatever, let's bring some of those kids, and let's bring some examples, and bring that back to the board, and take a look, and celebrate successes. I know we try to do that as much as we can. We run business meetings, obviously, through the Boys and Girls Club, but we never try to forget why we're there, and I think that would be a huge help to bring some of these kids, and, like I said, personnel, and celebrate what we do well.
Mrs. Knower, follow up?
I was out in the convention at the Dallas a few weeks ago, and the instructor had said, "All great things are simple." And I buy into it, and I don't, but I think when you have your focus and really, as far as like, when you have a goal in mind, and which, you know, is improving student learning, and that's your focus, you know, I think you can make great things happen. And then that, of course, as you're seeing those great things happen, that does help with the morale and everything else, and all those pieces come together. Compensation, benefits, being competitive, fair market value. Compensation, benefits, being competitive, fair market value, recognition, all that stuff is critical. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hanson, follow up?
I'll be very brief. The other issue, discussing evaluations, it also becomes a case of, when you evaluate someone for what they're doing, you do that on a periodic basis, and you let them do their job, and then you reevaluate. And I think one thing that this board has to do a much better job of is doing those evaluations, and then letting the people go out and do their job. You can't sit over shoulders on a continual basis and micromanage, asking that person, "What are you doing here? What are you doing there? What are you doing here? What are you doing there?" They can't get their job done. Their to-do list never goes off the desk, because they don't have the time and energy to do their job, which is an integral part of making their kids' education really work here. So I think as far as morale, I think that's a big piece, too, is you have to let people do their job, and then evaluate, and then let them do their job.
Mr. Rantham, follow up? Okay. Your opinion should be the role of individual school board members in the day-to-day activities of the district?
I don't believe that we should be managing the day-to-day operations, that's why we have administrative support, and leadership teams, and the teachers and custodians in place to do their jobs. So, I think that's incredibly important. As far as what the school board role is, you know, I look at us as visionaries, and, you know, when we develop the initiatives and the goals, that, you know, we are directing that to the superintendent, and to the administrative team, and then for them, as they're doing those projects, that they're reporting back to us. And I kind of look at it, in one sense, as a business model, where, you know, they're developing the research and the data, they're building that model for us, it gets implemented, and then we're monitoring and going from there. So, I think that's how we can do a lot of things. You know, the board is to function also to, you know, to develop some of the policies, and I think that's our main role. And then, of course, the community, and the citizens, and taxpayers, too, in that communication as well.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Hanson?
Policy, accountability, vision, oversight, four words. None of those have date in them anywhere, especially every day, because they aren't. They're bigger picture things. They're step back and see the forest for the tree sort of things. So as far as a board number role and day-to-day operations, we don't have one. That's not our job. I've got day-to-day operations going on on a KDAH, and kids, and wife, and dogs, day-to-day, no. But we need to keep our ear to the ground, that's something we can do every day, and listen for what we do here in the community, good, bad, or different about what's going on in our district. So, that's really our day-to-day role, to be real honest, in my opinion, is we really don't have one. Other than keep our ear to the ground, and then times come up, we need to take action, we swing to action into our role, with policy, accountability, oversight, and vision.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
I liked the ear-to-the-ground comment, that was good, because that's how it feels to me. I do get a lot of calls. In fact, between my work issues and constituent calls the last couple of months, I've had a hard time keeping my voicemail clean, though. I take that as an opportunity to let people bet, to let them express concern and comment. And I'm trying to address that through the administration, getting information back to them. So, ear-to-the-ground, you bet, there's a lot of things that go on, I believe, that the board isn't even made aware of. And some of the comments I get from people say exactly that. "You guys don't know, they're not telling you everything." Well, okay, that sounds a little suspicious, but the bottom line is, they bring factual information, and they express the concern, you listen to it, and you take it to administration, hopefully it can be resolved. I, I do believe in the oversight function as well, but that's what we're here for. We're here to provide oversight and direction through policy, and governance through policy as well. But, the apparent tension I get from some of the comments I hear about standing back and let things go, does cause me to pause a little bit, because historically, that's what happened here, years ago, that's what happened. There was a standoff approach, there was a lack of awareness, and if you're obligated to your role, and serving in the best way you see fit, based on your elected role, you have to be informed, you have to ask questions to get answers, to make a difference. If you just come to one or two meetings per month, and here was recommended to you, and you have no background on it, it's very difficult to make an informed decision and vote properly. So, that, that's the challenge. That's the, basically, we're talking about role and responsibility and function, and how does it correlate to the district? It'd be a great discussion for the annual meeting in August.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Fisher?
I believe, just working with boards over the years, that a board should really fly at 50,000 square feet, and I've said that three times, and I meant it. The day-to-day operations of, that's why we hire good people. If the right people are in place, we shouldn't have to worry about all that. I'm not even involved in the operations of day-to-day stuff at my own job. I raise money and work with the board, and try to do that, and let the operations people of all of the different clubs do their jobs, and come in there and support them, and answer questions, and kind of be a rah-rah cheerleader type guy. And I know we have to have, there's been issues in the past, but none of the people that are here today, I have any reason to, to question what they're doing. So again, letting them do their jobs. I think there's a great administrative team in place, and we monitor what's going on. And you swoop down when you need to swoop down. And setting policy and vision is what the board, in my opinion, should do. And listen to all of you out there, and do the best we can with what you're asking us to do. Obviously, as board members, we'll try our best, we don't have all the answers, we'll listen to you, but man, just let people do their jobs.
Okay. Mrs. Miller, follow up?
I just wanted to add, you know, as far as like day-to-day operations, when we're making decisions, and voting, and things like that, every decision that we make, we should always ask the question, "How does this affect our students and their future?" And I think that's very, very important, because that does get into the day-to-day, as it affects others as well.
Mr. Hanson, follow up?
It comes back to oversight. We spend a lot of hours hiring these people. Like I said, most of them have been hired in the past three years out of our administrative team. We've done the homework, the test scores are coming in, great, our open enrollment numbers are better, so there's a positive trend line there. From a valuation standpoint, things look good. And as far as the day-to-day thing goes, we're three kids in the high school, all with smartphones and social media, I know in about 1.6 seconds, what happens here on a daily basis, if it's a significant issue. As we all do, that's the good and the bad of today's technology and social media. We're all very much in touch with things we never would have known, even six years ago, five years ago, four years ago, and that. So, for that reason, that's how really any board member can stay in touch, if they just keep their ears open.
Okay. Mr. Rantham?
Okay. Mr. Hanson, early. We've spoken a lot about challenges that are facing us, and you've all identified it thought very eloquently, your own individual perception of the vision of where we are, and where we want to be. But, the next question is, what will you do personally? What will your action be to make that happen? So, what will you do in these next three years, in a concrete manner, to improve communication, to improve trust, to break down those walls? What will you do in that regard?
Great question. I'm talking about future items, and what, I do like to make a difference, that's the other reason I'm sitting up here, trying to make a difference. The concrete pieces is, Policy 187 talks about the communication at the meetings, and the minimum, by the way, is one meeting one. That's not a maximum, that's not set in stone, that's a minimum that you must have. So, that would handle that issue directly. As far as the concrete change with the salary schedule, asking for help to make sure we get that done and done right. Many school districts have tried to do it on their own, and dropped it, because they couldn't quite get where they wanted. So that's a concrete piece of the puzzle. We've got an insurance broker in place to try to help make sure our benefits are correct, and that the most efficient that we can get our hands on. So those are the important pieces. We are gonna be fighting, I think, an ongoing budget issue. Unless the formula changes, Kiwasken is going to experience tough budget times. So, we're gonna have to take a very active role, concrete things, numbers are my thing. Live and breathe them every day since I was born. Budget, how do we make all the pieces come together in our budget without losing the quality that we need to educate our children? We've got 1,900-plus individuals we're responsible for. The almighty dollar is great, and savings is great when it comes to tax savings. People complain about the real estate tax bill going up, and part of that puzzle isn't just a real estate tax bill. Have you looked at your income, state income tax bill? Scott Walker's done a great job of cutting income taxes. We've got a whole new manufacturing credit, that means a manufacturer or a farm will pay nearly zero taxes in 2016. That will draw jobs, that's great. My only concern is, what is that gonna do for our budget numbers? Is if we have less state aid to work with, because there's less income taxes paid, then we're gonna have more real estate taxes that we'll be paying for as municipality. That's the dangerous part of the equation, and that's what we don't know yet. But, when those things come up, I live, breathe numbers. So, that's why I can definitely be concrete things, work directly with you personally, if I do know on the finances, to help in every which way I can, with one of my individual talents.
Mr. Hanson?
John, if you would, I heard the question correctly, you were asking about personal action to improve communication, trust, and break down barriers, essentially?
Yes, concrete action.
It wasn't anything about the state of our environment, per se, it's more about just that?
What will you personally do? I mean, as far as your own mission, you have each articulated a vision for the coming year, coming three years, and what is a priority for you to do, and what actions will you take in those years?
Well, a couple of things come to mind. Let's start on the personal side. We have gone through great challenge, we have greater challenges ahead, and in my opening statement, I talked about revenue being the biggest thing, because everything that happens here has dollars attached to it. We have, I have a concern. I, I see continued increase in taxes, and I see possible referendums eventually, if things don't get better on how we execute our day-to-day process to exhaust those options. Before we can go to the public, and say, "We've done everything we can to tighten up, and now we need something different." And that goes back to Madison. Equalization aid, school levy credit, categorical aid, revenue limits in enrollment, those five formula items factor in every year. And the thing with equalization aid, there's secondary aid, tertiary aid, and it depends on where Madison puts the money. They can put it in categorical aid or equalization, and it throws off the benefit that we'll get. That, that's a concern for me. So what am I personally gonna do? Well, first of all, let's finish that point. I'm gonna, I continue to talk to Madison folks to try to get them to let school districts have a more stable environment for how they can plan their budget for here. It's very difficult for business managers across the board, including ours with Ms. Thorsten, to try to plan for a budget when you don't really know where you stand until October. The other part is the continued communication. We have good people on this board, we have great people on this board, we have passionate, caring individuals who share common goals in a lot of the areas. We oughta be able to get to understanding how we can function better and more effectively. So, on a personal note, that'll be what I'll do going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
I believe listening would be crucial, trusting people, trusting this community, trusting our administrators, our teachers, getting back to putting them in position for the reason they were hired. It's not about the board, not about the board at all, it's about all of us. I understand budgets are tight, worked with them, much like Troy has said, but quality of our kids' education, and making kids ready for the future. We always hear over the years, "Why I want my child to go to a four-year college, I want my child to go to a four-year college." I think that is important, I think that is great. But you know what? Two-year school, to tell our kids to go into a two-year school and get a technical degree, there's a heck of a lot more jobs out there right now with a two-year degree. And so, with a lot of the kids that we work with, that I've worked with over the years, are kids that need us the most, are kids that think that the four-year degree sometimes aren't attainable for everybody. And I interview a lot of people over the years with master's degrees in this and that, and you know, that's great, but we need to make sure that our kids hear the message, that it's not just about going on to college and with a four-year degree. Technical school is critical at this time, too. We need to tell our kids how important they are to us, each and every day. We need to do that. And for me, the biggest thing is student achievement. We need to remember why we are all here, and student achievement is why I would be here. And I think it's our job, not only as board members, or personnel through the school district, but as parents, we need to put our kids in a position to succeed, no matter what that is. Might be sports, might be arts, might be computers, whatever the case, but we have an obligation to put children in a place where they can succeed. And that's what I've tried to do for years, and I think that's what we need to continue to do.
Okay. Mrs. Miller?
I concur with Mr. Rantham and Hanson, that the budget is gonna become very critical, as we're not getting help from Madison. As a board, we certainly need to look at the efficiencies in that, and also with an eye on making certain that it doesn't affect student learning and achievement. So that's gonna be very important. We may need to even look at some revenue options, and that can be involved with corporations and sponsorships. We have, you know, programs with engineering and manufacturing, and those are great things for the, you know, for corporations to invest in us, and then we can invest in them with our students. And many corporations do look for tax write-offs, so we can look at those venues as well. Some things where we are, where we want to be, certainly the salary, we're looking at that matrix, and bringing bids in for it. Health insurance is another big issue. Test scores, we want to certainly keep the eye on that with academic performance. Another big thing is, you know, we don't even know in the future what jobs are gonna be out there. So, educating our kids, and trying, trying to determine, you know, what's, what's the most effective, and are they ready for career and college-ready? Like I said, well, we don't even know what type of career or job that they may have in the future. And as far as trying to break down the communication, the barriers, the barriers and silos, again, it goes back to, we talked about it pretty much all night, is the trust and the respect, character counts, and doing things ethically, and that should go throughout the entire district, starting with the board.
Mr. Hanson, follow up?
Essentially, the question is, what would you personally do? You have a vision, each of you have articulated your own visions for some challenges we face, and what would you personally do in that regard to see that vision happen? And I'm looking for, as each of you look at, listen to the follow-ups, I'm looking for an action. I, I hear a lot of really good thoughts about where we are, but I want to hear a really good thought about what you will do, and that's where I was heading with that, so.
I guess, I will speak to that. I thought I did offer some concrete solutions to that, because we do need action items, and the action items, a lot of them are, thank goodness, in place to some point. The communication one, we discussed that, regarding public comments being out there on every agenda. And it's also a matter of working with our administrative team at work, there has to be, there has to be a better working relationship between that. My goal there, how would I make that happen? Simply talk to them. If you've got questions, talk to them directly. I'm just, you know, what you can do better. Instead of telling someone else what to do, ask what you can do better to help to make a difference in our district.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rantham?
I would just like to restate the communication item, and getting that tightened up as an action item, I'd also action item, I'd also like to restate the efforts to try to get legislation, personnel to see the impact of what they're doing to school districts ever since Act 10 came in, we've got to get some balance in how subsidies are provided to districts. I'd like to add that, and it's around money again, but when I first got on the board, I was told that the school funding and finances is very complicated. I don't believe it's that complicated. I certainly couldn't do it as well as Julie does it, however, I do believe I have some questions I could ask to try to enhance the awareness of the board to help be more involved in that process, so that we are sure that we are exhausting options internally within our control to do the best we can, not only to sustain quality education with the students and to have positive experience for all of them and all of the employees, but also that the taxpayer gets the return on investment for the efforts that we are supposed to be providing, which is oversight and due process on how money is spent here.
Mr. Fisher, follow up?
Just very shortly, again, I'm new to this, but respecting board members, respecting all board members' opinions, and then communicating professionally and stopping all this outside things you read about, and acting a little bit more professional.
Mrs. Miller?
I just want to mention, you know, we've been having some conversation in our recent board meetings as far as with the visionary committee and doing surveying out in the community and getting feedback, and I feel that's going to become very important for us, that data that we receive and taking an action plan off of that information that we receive. You know, look at, it's going to be great feedback, but we have to do something with that, so I believe that will give us a lot of the answers.
I hear that we've visited the Common Core, kind of combined into one little summation question of those, to revisit that one more time. What does Common Core mean to you? Would you vote in favor of it if it came to a vote? And how would you get teacher input? So a three-part question. And that question will go to Mr. Rantham first, please.
Three parts, please repeat.
What does Common Core mean to you? Would you vote in favor of it if it came to a vote? And how would you get teacher input?
How would I get teacher input? Well, I think it would have been great to have teacher input when they created them, because it's my understanding that that didn't quite happen. So to get the teacher input on what their experiences are and how they feel about it would definitely be something I'd want to do before we took a vote on it. My position is one of concern about the mechanics of it, so if it were to go to a vote before we talk to the teachers, which I would not recommend, I would want to know if it had to go in the way it is, or if things could be changed so that we could use it as a base and then make it more local control-based. And what does it mean to me? It means a common approach, a standard approach for education lesson processing to execute the educational task for the students, that's what it means to me. It's a standard process for how teachers execute the education to the students. But I just have, as I said earlier, the federalization piece, the data mining concern, those are the two biggest ones I have.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Well, I don't know exactly, I'd have to learn more about it and definitely get the experts' opinion on it. I do like local control, I understand it's a standard process, but I definitely like local control. My role is not to be a politician, but to make sure that kids get the best possible education that they possibly can, so I definitely would listen to some of the experts in our school district before voting either way on that.
Mrs. Miller?
Common Core means to me, you know, it's the rigor in the classroom, especially with the math and reading, and aligning that with college and career readiness, developing more conceptual, so students understand the why behind things, and critical thinking skills, that's what it means to me. How do we get teacher input on that? I think we start by having meetings with the teachers and getting, you know, their input to develop the curriculum, and listening to them, and training teachers, because it would be a big change in the classroom as well. Whether I'm for or against, you know, certainly we all know this is a really big hot button, there's politicians can't agree on this, and there's debate going all over the place, so I guess I'd like to wait until there's more information that comes out on this subject, but I have to say that as far as enhancement and tougher testing standards and things, I am certainly an advocate for that.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
What Common Core means to me, it's a national attempt to standardize curriculum, some testing, data mining was brought up, and as we know, nationalizing most anything doesn't work very well. Implementation has been a struggle. The parallels to Obamacare with Common Core are evident, so there is inherent issues with it. We need something to make sure the rigor is getting stronger, we need somebody to help set some curriculum. We have a curriculum director here, so we can definitely, we have the ability to make modifications to what's over there. As I said before though, this is what's been presented, so it's a starting point, and that's all it is. As long as we're increasing the rigor, we're winning the game. As far as a vote goes, well, no, it's not working. People obviously are concerned about it, the right people were not brought into place, this is no different than me as a board member telling an administrative person how to do something. The federal government's trying to tell our schools, here's how you're going to do it. So in that part, it fails. How to gain teacher input? Well, we have teacher unions still in effect, we have teachers that deal with our kids on a daily basis. I'm not the world's best survey writer, but obviously we have to take nominations to get people to form a group to put some sort of standardization together for whatever we're going to do. Now, if that's standardization for Wisconsin or Kewasken, it gets very involved, at what level is it too big or too small? I don't know those things. So as far as the input goes, yeah, we want to have input from teachers, from not just high school, and elementary and middle school teachers, college professors. What are they looking, what are they looking for when this student shows up as a freshman at UW Madison campus? And to employers, what are you looking for? We need a cross-section. I'm seeing a great parallel between what we need to do to modify Common Core, but what we need to do in our own district.
Mr. Anthony, with follow-up?
Jim, before you begin, I've just handed another Common Core question, it's a simple one to add on to that, so it's a well-written page of text, but the bottom question is, do you pledge if elected to bring in experts on both sides for the issue to discuss these standards in the near future? Which is kind of an add-on question for the Common Core.
Do I pledge to bring in experts?
Yeah.
From both sides?
Yep.
Yes, I do. I've answered that since last October and probably sooner than that. That's what I really wanted to restate. I really liked all the responses here from everybody, it was great. I heard the desire to know more, and let's have that conversation and make that happen.
Mr. Fisher, follow up?
Yes. Yes, experts should come from both sides and to hear and listen. I think we communicate, we bring the best people to the table, and we do best, we do what's best for kids in the future. We must bring people to the table and get both sides, yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Absolutely, I feel that we certainly need to hear both sides to make the best overall decision in order to also be objective and fair, and then like Jay Fisher had said, to do the very best that we can for student achievement.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes, the discussion has to be had so that all the facts do get out. This is something like when you were kidding about monsters running the bed, some lights on, like, oh, there aren't any monsters under the bed, but you had to verify that. So facts are facts, facts, and I think resolving and crushing myths at this stage of the game are critical to us making the right decisions. But it's not just a matter of pros and cons for Common Core, it's a matter of what can Kewasken do with those pros and cons to help make their own curriculum better, because we're not going to change a whole lot. I actually did get an email from Jesse Kramer who's running for Assembly of the U's office, someone like that, they can make some change to Common Core. Us as a group, we have to take what I guess we know as Common Core and find out what works for Kewasken. That's how we make this all work.
Thank you. We have one more from the audience. This one's a specific one, I'm trying to figure out a way how to reword it as a general one. I'll read it first, then I'll try to reword it in a way that's philosophical. "As a confirmed taxpayer with the consistent rise in the school district tax, Wyver Finances reported on June 10, 2013 meeting, it all was great. Two weeks later, there's a notification, we had a $240,000 budget shortfall. How is this great? How do you account for that?" And I think rather than answering necessarily the specific question, maybe we can rephrase that as, when faced with changes in budgets, we live in a turbulent time, things change all the time, states add money, they take away money, feds add money, take away money, what is your strategy as a board member, or will it be as a board member, to tackle those sorts of issues?
Mr. Fisher?
Again, mentioned it before, I mean, there's not, obviously, with school districts, nonprofits, whatever the case, I realize there's not enough money to go around. We have a million-dollar budget, where I'm at, I think there's a $20 million budget for schools, all of you have your own budgets at home, and priorities are, no matter what budget, if you're talking about a million, $20 million, or $500, and so you must always prioritize, and that's what I've done for years with budgets, you prioritize and do the best you can with what you have, but I think in a school district, you darn well better put the kids first, and that would be priority to myself.
Mrs. Miller?
As far as like the budget goes, you know, it's that moving target, and you know, we can get reports of projections of a surplus, reports of potentially a shortfall, and being that it's a moving target, things can certainly change quite rapidly, depending on the needs of the district. As far as, you know, dealing with these challenges with the budget, I do believe we do have to find some ways to generate revenue, and we need to look at grants and focus on those things to bring more to the district. And some ways we could do that is, again, it goes back to partnerships with the businesses, corporation sponsorships, and graduating.
Mr. Hanson?
What can we do directly? Because much of what our budget deals with is handled in Madison, encouraging people like Jesse Kramer, what person to run, looking at running someone with Kewasken District care against politicians that represent us in the state of Madison. If you really want to make a difference, that's definitely one way to do it. Get someone from our district to run, and take care of our district when it gets a mess. As far as what can, and I'm not running, so what can we do at a local level? That was part of the question. Again, I work with Julie on a regular basis, I deal with budgets and finances every day. Worked through a recession back in 2009, 2010, with many of my clients, helped them survive. This is old hat, I've dealt with this for five years now, and that's something I bring to the table, is I've watched how this occurs, and what we're seeing now is very similar, it's a school economic recession. We are suffering with reducing budgets on a regular basis. Well, you can't continue to cut, eventually there's nothing there to cut. Sue made a point about grants, we need to look at revenue. I've stated on multiple occasions, increasing our open enrollment numbers, we gained $6,500 per child. Right now, we're negative 100. There's $650,000 on the table if we can create an attractive enough district and draw children here. It's not just the bottom line, if you want to survive a recession, you need to watch your bottom line, but you also need to watch your top line, and we have ways to go and pursue top-line money. And we're doing a decent job this year, some nice grants are coming. Pat Murchin's doing a great job with the engineering program, creating us great publicity. That's certainly going to help our top line, is publicity. So how do you help an issue like this going forward? What can I do? I just told you some of my ideas on what I think we can do as a district, but we need to do it as a district. I can't go out and rah-rah and get people to love Kewasken. We need to do that as a group, we need to make sure we look good in public as a district, we look like we know what we're doing here, we act appropriately. That's how we draw people here, because we can increase the top line to where we'll run out of places to cut on the bottom. You can't cut your way to prosperity.
Mr. Anthony?
I don't know. I don't know the number of years this district has had a surplus going into the end of its fiscal school year, but last year was the first time that I can remember that we had a deficit, and it snuck up on us, snuck up on me. I didn't expect it. We had done a $188,000 adjustment to the budget to help our IT department because it was 18th century, we needed to get it to the 21st century, that was good, money spent for a good reason. But that wasn't what threw us, it was legal fees and some maintenance-related issues due neglect for years prior, that was also necessary to do. A legal fee, one was a surprise to me, that was a significant amount of money. It snuck up on us, snuck up on me. What am I going to do about it this year? And every year I'm on the board, if possible? I started in February of this year, last month, asking for reports from the business manager on where we're at with the budget process every step of the way. We need to know where we're at with formulation of the budget process, with any projections coming from Madison, what the possibility of risk is, and what are we going to have as a Plan B in case we have to make that decision. I don't want to get us to a place as a district where we're cutting arteries and veins, i.e. personnel and programs. I also don't want to see us have to jack taxes every year or go to referendum. We have to exhaust our options with what we have control over, we've got to cross every T and dot every I, and earlier we talked about micromanagement and day-to-day operations. This is one of those areas where as a board member, you're responsible to cast a vote that affects the lives of many. There's fixed income, elderly, single-parent families in this town, nobody wants raises it to their taxes, increases their taxes. We had 86 per thousand, two years ago, we had 53 last year. That's a buck and a half over a two-year period roughly, if you add the 18 cents from the 2011, 2012 year, buck and a half per thousand, you know? We're trending the wrong way from that perspective. Can we have a discussion and argument perhaps on return on investment for that? Maybe, but right now, if we don't check it at the front gate, we're going to continue to have increases, and we're not going to be sure what we're getting on the back end. So I go back to my point about Madison and equalization aid, distribution and dispersment of how monies are going to be sent for subsidies, I go back to communication, we've got to focus on day-to-day operation process regarding budget creation, so we don't have another surprise.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Fisher, follow up?
I have written a lot of grants over the years, thousands of them, and be willing to help out in any way I can with that. Obviously, businesses and community leaders keep nonprofits going, and I always wondered why school districts don't do more of that. There's a lot of pride in the community, and you have companies in a community and different people, and so why don't they do a little bit more of that? West Bend opened up 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, and they go out and they've raised over a million dollars in their community for things in the district, and for extra things that they needed through foundations and companies. Why can't Kewasken do that? Why can't Kewasken think about that? These are our kids. I don't care if they're at the school district, if they're at the Boys and Girls, if they're at the YMCA. I don't care if they're at the school district, if they're at the Boys and Girls, if they're at the YMCA. These are our kids. And I think we have an obligation to take a look at that. And so a 501(c)(3), for those of you that don't know, a nonprofit status. There's no reason we can't go out for extras and ask people in Kewasken to help our kids.
And Mrs. Miller, a follow-up?
This is on a small scale, but I recently got an email from the PTA for the Farmington Sock Hall. But I thought it was a neat idea where they just basically emailed the parents and said, hey, are you a business owner? We need some support and you can publicize your business with brochures and can you give us a donation? And many of us, I mean, we just need to utilize the people out in the community as, you know, whether they're working in West Bend or Milwaukee or Kewasken. And it's amazing the resources out there that we can get support from if we just ask.
Mr. Hanson, a follow-up?
Obviously, it's a great question. We've got some answers, some opportunities out there that we can pursue. If you look at a football field out there that's got chain link fence all around it, they look really pretty with a lot of business signs all over it. There's always revenue opportunities there. Monitoring the budget, we can do to a point, and we have to watch the expense side. The variable that will always drag all the way to October is the revenue. How is the formula going to work for us? I encourage everyone in this room to call Glenn Growth and then push his buttons on what you can do to help our formula. Because really, that's where it comes from. And each of us here have a responsibility and can do that. And spread the word on that. We need to speak up for Kewasken. As far as monitoring the end of the year, with how the budget comes out at the end of the year, there were a lot of corrections that had been made the last couple of years to the surpluses we had prior. We were behind. Our facilities weren't in poor shape. Our IT was in very poor shape. We had to get caught up. And what it cost us was running into the situation where you go into fund balance prior to your surpluses to do that. So that was the balancing act that was done. So you don't have to be concerned that your board is overspending on you. Your board is taking former good-year money and putting in stuff that could easily have been spent in those prior years, and you wouldn't have had the surplus. So it's a matter of taking care of our facilities because five and six-year-old computers don't work very well. 25-year-old roofs don't work very well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ranthan, anything? Okay, listen for audience participation.
I serve at the will of the people with great joy. Came into this opportunity to want to make a difference, and many things have happened since I started. And I feel very, very good about what I did the past three years. Very confident in all of my decisions, with maybe the exception of two. I pray, I soul-search on everything I do for this district. It means that much to me. My family comes second sometimes. It means that much to me. It's probably not a good thing to say, but that's what happens to me because I care that much. I'm very serious about the responsibility of this role. Obligated to serve to the best of my abilities. I utilize my resources effectively. I have created a network throughout this entire state. I tap other boards and other board presidents extensively. Campbell's College is brilliant on the line for locations. I use the WASBE resources pretty effectively as well and aggressively to and including their legal counsel because I want to check myself that we do things right as a board and as a district. In fact, they recognized me for last year. I'm the only individual who got an award for this district from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. I'd like to read the certificate. It was laying on my chair at the last board meeting. I was told that these are supposed to be announced and celebrated and even have press releases in the paper. But mine didn't make that. Certificate of Achievement, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Award Level 1 to J. R. Rantin for Commitment to Children Through Continued Participation in WASBE Programs and Activities. Why do I tap that respected resource? Because they provide assistance to make me a better person in this job. And I'm going to continue to use them until I can't anymore. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Fisher?
If elected, my goal will be to listen to and work with fellow board members and to keep Kewasken the best school it can be for the quality education of our kids. I will be willing to use a combination of prudent budget cuts and increased revenue to reach that goal. I will work to help the new board to move away from some of the unproductive ugliness of the past and move ahead with renewed support from the community to assure the long-term quality education for all the kids in this district. This election is all about the kids and their future, always has been and always will be.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
If elected, I will focus on the vision and, you know, I certainly have us kids in the district and many of you have kids in the district. Why would I ever, ever want to hurt that? Why would I ever want to harm or ruin their education? That's what it's about. I want to see, you know, students maximizing their potential. And everybody is a community rally to pave the way. And as I feel, you know, they're going to be future taxpayer, future leaders of our community. And that's really what it started with for me. And I think you'll find what it means that I'm ethical. And I believe in, you know, doing things with trust and respect. And if you want to have the administrative and superintendent manage the schools and the teachers to teach and the students to learn, then I hope I get your vote because that's what I'm after as well. And I really want to help as far as the trust, respect throughout so we can progress forward. You know, nothing's ever, it's always counterproductive when there's assumptions, rumors, gossip, and it never gets anywhere. And I want us just to continue to progress forward. We have a lot of issues that were talked about tonight, and I want to help with that, such as the core curriculum, test scores, health insurance, which I chair that. So I want to keep that going. Thank you.
And Mr. Hanson?
I just wanted to point out I've got copies of my resume here in front of me for anyone who wanted to pick up and learn a little more of the detail of my background and what I've done over the past 20 years, both in my professional career and my community. I've been president of many organizations. I work with over 1,000 individual clients and over 150 businesses. I've seen a lot of struggles, a lot of successes. I've been lucky enough to be parts of those. And I would like to be part of the success that is Kewasken. Kewasken School District is a $20 million business. I bring a lot of business advisory skill, knowledge, and ability to this job. And based on the fact that we're going to be still in some very difficult financial times, I feel like I bring a very strong skill set to help with the exact problems we're going to be facing. Our product, as I said before, is well-rounded, well-educated, future owners and taxpayers. They need to be college and career-ready. We need to have teachers here that care and that can make that difference in that child's life. We have them here. We need to retain them. We need to draw more to our district. How we'll do that as a board, and I'll do that, is through oversight accountability without micromanagement. Let the people who are talented do their job, whether it be the teacher level, staff level, administrative level. Monitor them, evaluate them, and if need be, replace them. So if we handle our positions correctly, we all do our jobs, we will have easier budget times, we will have lower tax bills, we will have a larger enrollment in Kewasken, we will have a very happy and satisfied staff going forward.
Thank you very much for coming. I want to thank all of the candidates for your candid answers. And I want to thank you for your time. I'm sure the candidates will be willing to meet you on your way out and then to say a few words. I thank you for participating in government.